All right, thank you, Brian. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight for the February 22, 2021, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start tonight with a presentation by the Exceptional Foundation. And I don't know if Tricia or Robbie, do y'all want?
Are you ready?
We're ready for you.
You go first with the pledge?
No, no, we're going to, just if you want to announce anything first, and then we're going to do the invocation and the pledge. I didn't know if y'all wanted to say anything first.
Well, we did the pledge first, we'll go with the real first.
You do that first.
Oh, God. You're asking a lot for us to prepare.
We've got to open up for this, these guys? Are you kidding me? Hey, guys, we're the Exceptional Foundation. We like to get up in front of you guys and just say hey every year and catch everyone up on what we're doing. But we especially wanted to be here tonight because there's so many new faces. And I know everyone who's been on the council for a while knows us, but we definitely wanted to just say hey to the new guys and let you guys know exactly what we do. And in a nutshell, what we do is we're the social hub for people with intellectual disabilities in the greater Birmingham area. And what that means is whether you're a five-year-old with Down Syndrome and you don't have a summer camp to attend, or an after-school program to join, you come to us. Or you're a 35-year-old adult with autism and you've never gotten to attend prom, or be on a sports team, or gotten to go on a trip without your parents, these are the kind of services we're providing. And really, it's all about friendships and relationships. And that's a service that unfortunately hasn't always been there in our society. So that's what we do in a nutshell. We want to let you guys know what our last year has been like. Certainly, there have been challenges, as you can imagine. I think any nonprofit, any business in existence has faced some pretty unique challenges in the past year. But we're pretty darn proud of how we've risen to these challenges. We closed for 13 weeks in mid-March and opened back up on June 15th. We still ran our entire eight-week summer camp on, starting June 15th. I mean, we were kind of the guinea pigs for getting back to normal for, you know, this kind of school-type setting. And like I said, we were open every single day. We've been opening, we've been operating at about a 40% to 60% capacity of what we normally do, so things are a little different around there. We've had to institute, obviously, social distancing, masks, you name it. We're, safety is our number-one priority. But what we've had to do is we've had to adapt. We weren't offering virtual instruction a year ago, but now we are, and I don't think we'll ever stop. We've kind of been forced to change with the times, and I think we're all really proud of the job we've done. And I think we've been really encouraged by our parents, our participants, and our community. And part of that community, obviously, is you guys. And so we want to thank y'all, because I know I've told you guys this before, and I'm going to sound like a broken record, and I'm going to keep sounding like a broken record. I don't think there is a city in this country that can hang its hat on how it works with individuals with disabilities like Homewood does. You think about it, you've got the Bell Center and the Exceptional Foundation. I could throw a football between those two places. That's a lifetime of care, a lifetime, in this, in this little city. And there are a lot bigger cities that I don't think can lay claim to that kind of community support, that kind of engagement. Because I don't think anything speaks to the character of a community more than how they treat their most vulnerable citizens. And these guys are the most vulnerable citizens we have. And again, Homewood is the most unique place in the world, and what we've all decided to do collectively to make sure that these guys have a place is amazing. So we thank y'all. And now, Tricia, would like to say a few words.
You know, I want to go back on what, you know, Robbie said, on the thank you for everything that y'all have done and your believing in us. And through that, I want to say also, for the first time, probably, I was scared to death. And people were calling me, other nonprofits from all over the greater Birmingham area, at least, and then it got a little bit bigger than that, and said, "How are y'all doing it?" And the Exception Foundation at Homewood, and I never thought that we were the ones that were going to lead the path, but we have, and we've done it. And through that, it's been, the thank you notes that have come from the corporations and from families will make you cry if you even look at it. People you know, I know y'all all know, the Giotinas. And to talk to Rosalie about, I don't know how many times, about helping with Finney and what we have done for her and her family has been unbelievable. Another great example of what is going on in the community is, so we have a parent that works for O'Neill Steel, and she said her child could not come for two days because she has to clock in exactly at 8:00 with O'Neill Steel, and that's the time that we open. And it was so nice to be able to call and say, "You know what? We have a participant at the Exception Foundation whose mother works for you. Is there any way we could change the rules for a minute?" They said, "Yes, we know Homewood, we know the Exceptional Foundation." And Kraft was the first one that said, "Tell her she can be late, no problem at all." And that is what continues on and on and on. And so the thank yous have been great, but of course, the financial part is what everybody wants to know about also. We've made it. Am I going to tell you it's been easy? No. Have I told you I've cashed in every favor in the entire world? Yes, but we're in the black. We did get the PPP loan. I don't even know what that means, but I just know I signed all the paperwork.
The 40s, I would say.
That is a true story. And you know, speaking about that, Robbie, I think that that was probably something I don't have on my piece of paper, but every single solitary employee at the Exceptional Foundation got a pay cut, every one of them. And not one of them complained, not one, because we're here for a cause. But what else are we doing? You know, I was saying that people have reached out to us. We've had Auburn, Fairhope, Atlanta have all been here to Birmingham to talk to us. I have zoomed myself to death about how we're doing it, and they're copying it, and they're here. Tomorrow, I have Gadsden coming down. Also, I have Walker County, I have Huntsville, I don't even know Coleman, Gadsden, they're all calling us on Zoom, and they all want to know if they can come visit for us to show them how we're doing this here in Homewood. That's pretty outstanding from y'all. Also, Barry, I don't have it on my notes either, but I think it's probably one of the best stories in the world. Barry introduced me to someone named Josephine, and, you know, I was walking through the office, and they were meeting about borrowing the Exceptional Foundation building, which we charge $200 if you want to use our building, just because that makes you kind of accountable. And they're providing full rides all the way through college for people from Rosedale. I had lunch with her at Soho Social the other day, and it was outstanding. And the building is open to people like that, too, for us to continue on. But we're also bringing in vendors into here at the foundation from all over everywhere to entertain our participants. We're still trying to do the nursing students. And what I'm trying to say, but I don't know how to say it professionally, is that we're bringing people to Homewood to see that you are open to us being opened. I didn't know that some cities told their places they had to be closed. That never came across my mind that you would close us down, and you haven't. So I guess we're here to say thank you. Thank you from our parents, thank you from our staff, thank you from our participants, and thank you for believing in us, and we promise you, we will always make sure that we represent Homewood in the way that you would like for that to be. And on that mic, I do have one request. Please help us. We, the Chili Cook-Off is now not on March 7th. We're having a Chili Cook-Off because Avondale Brewery insists on us doing that, sounds fine to me, and they're doing everything. We just show up. It sounds easy to me. And the Chili Cook-Off, we are praying that we could have on May 1st in Macy's. And I know it's not up to you, but Mike has worked with me and the city of Mount Brook to make sure that, we hope we can do that. So will you just? Well, I was just, I was kind of wondering, would you tell me what she says? I don't understand half the time, so we can make it work. I'll be happy to go to Montgomery, you know, I don't know even, you know, that part. So with that, we are planning on continuing on, and from the bottom of the 750 people that we Zoom with, to the 60 people that we have there daily, and all of our employees, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
And the pledge allegiance, please.
So Counselor Alamon's going to do the invocation, and then we're going to do the pledge of, we'll get to the main event of the pledge of allegiance. If anyone will please stand.
Do any sign in? No? Okay. Oremus. Padre celestial amoroso, venimos a ti pidiéndote tu bendición y ayuda mientras nos reunimos. Oramos por orientación en los asuntos en cuestión y te pedimos que nos muestras claramente cómo realizar nuestro trabajo con un espíritu de alegría y entusiasmo. Bendice, Señor, esta reunión llenos por el camino justo. En el nombre del Padre, del Hijo, y del Espíritu Santo. Amen. I'll say quickly, in English. Heavenly Father, we come to you asking for your blessing and to help us during this meeting. We pray that you orient us to the items in question, and that we, that you guide us so that we may realize clearly our work with a spirit of happiness and enthusiasm. Lord, please bless this meeting and guide us on a just path. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much. Now, if everyone will face the flag, our Boy Scouts will lead us in the pledge.
....................................................................................................................................
Hey, Robbie. Robbie, I don't know when, but I think we have a game to make up. We might have to make it a doubleheader somehow.
Yeah, I was going to say, as soon as we can.
Yes. Well, and one of the ideas we've bandied about is maybe doing a softball game. We did a softball game years ago.
Yes, we did.
And within outdoors, you know, you're not as likely to get checked in the chin under the goal. I think it was, I think it was, who was it that got their lips split open one year? Anyway, but, so yeah, I think there's some avenues that we can go down, so we'll be in touch. And yeah, before I go, I just want to, I'm the broken record, I'm telling y'all. When people think of Homewood, people think of the school systems, our great parts, our restaurants, our downtown scene. It's time we start putting disability services right up there, because with the Lake Shore Foundation, Exceptional Foundation, Bell Center, this is like truly just such a unique place, and I think sometimes I even lose sight of that, and how just, how freaking awesome that is. So I'm just so thankful to you guys, and y'all have a great night. Thank you.
Well, Robbie and Tricia, thank you for everything y'all do. It's, we're proud to have you in Homewood and appreciate all the work.
I can't believe it.
That's right.
We'll see y'all in the corridor, the diamond, or somewhere soon.
Y'all let us know when you're ready. So with that, we will actually call the meeting to order. And Ms. Salter, if you will do a, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltonie?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nelms?
Here.
Counselor Andrus?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President White?
Here.
We'll zoom in. You have everybody.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is the reading of the minutes from February 8th, 2021, which Ms. Salter has distributed by email previously. I would entertain a motion to disperse with a reading and approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's 11 to 0. Next, we have board vacancies. First, I think the Arts Advisory Board, Ward 1, we have a nomination. Ms. Gier?
We sure do. Her name is Shannon Jaramillo. That's spelled J-A-R-A-M-I-L-L-O, and we are excited to recommend her approval.
Wonderful, thank you. Do we have a second for that nomination? Second for Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's 11 to 0. Ms. Salter, will you let her know?
She will. She may be in the sniper area.
She actually, I believe, they had their meeting earlier, and she was attending as the...
But we will formally send her a letter.
That's right. So we, then, other board vacancies. We have two at-large positions for the Medical Clinic Board that we need to fill. This is a board that is fairly specialized and deals with primarily things that go on in Brookwood, and Brookwood is apparently about to have a project, so we need to get that filled. One of the, it's a three-person board, two are vacant, well, one is vacant, this person's moved outside of Homewood. The other one is looking to serve again, but we will open up both of those spots for two weeks until March 8th, our next meeting. I would encourage everyone, if you know someone that's interested in that, like I said, Brookwood, I think, does have a project coming up where that's going to be needed, so if we could certainly fill the one empty spot, and certainly if anyone's interested in those spots, just please encourage people to apply that. There are none.
There's no special, Mr. Kendrick and I looked at it, but, but, yeah, live in Homewood, and it's that large, but Brookwood is anxious for us to get it filled, so anybody that knows somebody that are, one of the good candidates.
Is it someone in the healthcare world, someone in the...
Could be anybody. As long as they live in Homewood, it can be anybody. But people in the healthcare world may have added interest in it.
It has to do with pharmacy.
All of those three, the financial, the... ..................................................................
All right, so that will be open for two weeks.
Until, until 4th?
Until 4:30 on the 8th.
4:30. Okay.
All right, now for the additions to the agenda. Get ready. First is an addition to the consent agenda. This will be item 010221, request for permission to work in the city right-of-way adjacent to 1503 Melrose Place, brought by Michelle Miss Rainey and Greg Cobb. Next are items that we will add to the old business agenda. First is 120121, request for permission to work in the city right-of-way fire hydrant on 18th Street, brought to us by Greg Cobb. Next is 020221, request for permission to work in the city right-of-way in alley behind 1413 Woodland Drive to remove a hackberry tree, brought by Burt Neighbors and Wyatt Pugh. 030221, request for permission to work in the city right-of-way at 2719 19th Street South, brought by Reeves Construction and Wyatt Pugh. 040221, request for variance to extend fence taller than eight feet at 1507 Ridge Road, brought by Colleen Hindling and Wyatt Pugh. 050221, request to declare the following total vehicle surplus, 2014 Chevy Tahoe and 2016 Chevy Tahoe, brought to us by Gordon James. 080221, request for consideration for crosswalks and/or a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Gray Street and Evergreen Avenue, brought to us by Counselor Gier. 010220, request for updates to Greens Springs Revitalization, brought to us by Berkeley And that is it for the old business agenda. We have one item to add to the committee referral agenda. This will be 210221. It will go to Planning and Development. It is request for consideration of amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow for, to allow for consistent, consistency and public input on community gardens. And that, that's from me to the Planning and Development Committee. Then lastly, to other new business, 140221, request to set a public hearing for consideration of front yard fence variance at 1600 Shades Glen Circle, brought to us by Bill Weston and Wyatt Pugh. And I believe that is it. Did I get that right, Ms. Salter? Okay.
It absolutely did.
That last one, you already got on the committee referral agenda.
Correct. We need to set a public hearing tonight. We, it got left off the old business, I mean, the new business agenda, so we'll just, that's all we'll be doing for it, is setting the public hearing. All right, so with that, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Harden, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's 11 to 0, which will bring us to the consent agenda. Motion to approve by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 11 to 0. All right, that gets us to the old business agenda. First item is 060121, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of petition to vacate a strip of Parkland Drive next to Our Lady of Sarrows parking lot. And we will start with a report from special issues.
Yes, the committee met before the meeting and voted to send this item out without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Ms. Gier, and second by Ms. Anderson, it was a 5 to 0 vote.
All right. So with this, I will open the public hearing. I know that we've got some representatives of Our Lady of Sarrows, and I think you've probably got at least one person that wants to talk tonight, so if you want to, whoever that person is, if you want to come on up, just so everyone understands, we've got the issue before us regarding the vacation of this strip. I'm not sure this is going to be an issue, but just so everyone understands that I'm trying to do it at the beginning of all public hearings, we're not going to have any displays of support or against from the audience. If you, if you have something you want to say, you're more than welcome to come up and say it, but we won't have any, any, anything else from the, from the people sitting in the audience, so. Okay, so with that, Mr. Fralisi, are you the designated representative?
I'd like to thank the council for... Taking some time tonight to hear what we got to say, but basically, this street is, has a 60-foot right-of-way, and we have requested that we vacate 10 feet, and it would be a 50-foot right-of-way. And I think, yes, you, you can see diagram here, the, you can see some encroachments now from Gori Reagan, but the line, the yellow line closest to the street is the existing line, and we are requesting to, to vacate that 10 feet of it. Yeah, the line closest to the building is the existing line, and we're asking to move it out, as we discussed earlier. And I have a plan here that is just black and white, it's not exactly showing the yellow line. But anyway, this will make it consistent with getting these old improvements out of the right-of-way, which have probably been there, I don't know, 20, 30 years. Also, it gives us an opportunity to be in compliance with the parking stall dimensions that the city has, so we're requesting this vacation. This is something that we've talked about for quite a while, and Mr. Kendrick has had the paperwork for, for a while, and, you know, hopefully there are no objections to it, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Well, and before we do questions for you, let me just see, is there anybody else that wishes to speak for or against this item? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and if the council has any questions or comments, Ms. Smith?
I do have one that I meant to ask during committee, and I completely forgot. When we vacate things, typically, there's a cost associated with that. Mr. Kendrick, is there a cost, a cost associated with this vacation?
It's, it's council's call. I don't know about the call.
Okay, because don't we, don't we normally, when we vacate something, there's...
I think everything that we've done over the last four years that I've been on, we calculated based on...
The square footage.
Based on the square footage and the market rate.
Yeah. So is that, is that part of the plan, that y'all are going to pay for that property?
It, it's not been mentioned to us before.
I mean, that's, that's typically what we do, and I don't, I wasn't sure, that's why I meant to ask it in committee, but...
That goes back to Counselor Wolverton's question when he asked, why don't you just ask to work in the right-of-way, so, versus vacating? I mean, I think the difference is money.
And Wyatt can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know I dealt with this in a different part of the city. Typically, when somebody vacates, they estimate the cost of the square footage based on the surrounding properties, and then they apply that to whatever the square footage is that you're asking to vacate, and then that, that creates the cost. Is that right? Am I saying that correctly, Mr. Pugh? Am I saying that right about how y'all calculate the cost of a vacation? Y'all, y'all look at the property value around the vacated area, and then apply that to whatever the square footage of what they're asking to vacate, correct?
I've only been involved in a couple of them, but yes, that's, that's what we've done, and we've been asked to do.
Yeah.
I have done that.
Yeah. So we, obviously, we wouldn't have a price tonight, because we don't know exactly what the square footage is, or what the value of the properties are around it, but that, that is something that...
Okay. So, let me ask you this. Tonight, you would, would, if you decided to give approval, it would be subject to agreeing on the number? But other than that, it would be approved, and so once we agree on the number, it's a done deal? We don't, I, I enjoy seeing you guys, but, and I'm sure y'all got other things to do.
Yeah, I understand. So, first of all, just sort of agreeing on the number is just whatever the number is, it is. There's not a negotiation, I guess, is first point. It, it's whatever, we use the same formula for all the land, whatever it is, it is. If the, we could, Mr. Kendrick, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we could make this conditional upon them agreeing to the number once we provide it?
Yeah. To be honest with you, we could handle it any way you choose to do it.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I don't know what the square footage costs to.
Right. So, so, again, I think if someone wants to move to approve this, I think it can either be done tonight, it can be, we can get you the number and come back, or it can be, it can be done conditional based upon the will of the council. That's, that's up to the council.
Since it's, since it's not my money, I would need a, a number, and...
No, under no circumstances is anyone asking you to agree to the number tonight.
No, I, I know you're not.
If we did it, it would be conditional on y'all accepting the number that we provide.
It's just the will of the council as to whether or not you would rather put this off two weeks, and give them the number, or whether we would like to, anyone's comfortable doing a motion conditional? Yes, Mr. Alamon?
I mean, I was trying to see, like, I understand wanting the property, but is there any way of an alternative to let them work on the right-of-way and provide indemnification agreement? Like, would that be also an alternative?
Well, that's, that's not what they asked for.
It would be an alternative if they asked for that.
Sure, I'm just trying to, yeah.
I get it. Because that's, that's what, that's what.
They'd have to change the item. I mean, based on, if they didn't like the number, that could be, if they came back with...
Correct. We, to answer your question, yes, that's an alternative, we'd have to start the process over, but yes, it's an alternative.
Okay, so, so the option is, or are, the options are, accept the, the number, reject the number and withdraw totally, or start over again by saying, "Hey, give us an easement to allow us to," because we're not building any buildings in this, as you know. It's landscaping and curb and...
And then we would just need to go back through the process and...
Right, okay. Right. Okay.
For that request.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just to follow up a question to that, and I know you referenced this in committee too, with the old improvements in the right-of-way, but I, I saw the graphic up on the screen, but I haven't seen it up close in detail. So what are the, are there any permanent structures in the right-of-way now? I mean, there's not, right? And you're just talking about landscaping improvements and so forth that we could give permission to, to be placed?
It sounded like more putting asphalt in the requested right-of-way.
Do you mind if I pass this around?
No. Because I think this is, I mean, I think it's important for people to see this, if they might want to see it, because, you know...
Just one of the, one of the issues that I, I'm having in, you know, kind of this procedurally is, you know, we had the public hearing tonight and the committee meeting earlier, you know, on a separate occasion, we may have had the presentation in committee first, and then, you know, some time in between, and then the public hearing. So I'm just trying to absorb all this information, because I'm thinking, I still don't see why you wouldn't have made initially the request to work in the right-of-way. When I think about vacating the property, I think about losing the future potential for the city of a sidewalk or some other access that we may need to see there. And I know you're not looking at a sidewalk there now because you have a plan for now, but I'm trying to maintain options available for the city long-term, you know, decades to come. And so that's why I'm trying to make sure that vacating the property is in the best interests of the city long-term.
Basically, this is a drive really for an emergency of the people using this alley, you know, and of course, for people to access the, the church property. So, yeah, I, I couldn't, 50, 100 years from now, or 20 years from now, I can tell you if you needed a sidewalk or not, but let me say this, this landscaping plan assumes that the, we'll get the vacation of the right-of-way. So we're not omitting any landscaping that we have in our properties, okay, that we agreed to do, so.
And, and just to clarify too, I think that you're saying the landscaping plan assumes the vacation of the right-of-way, and I think that the landscaping plan could also accomplish the same objective by getting permission to make improvements in the right-of-way, and that's, that's the point we keep talking through. I just want to clarify. Counselor Gualtin, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're good. I was just going to reiterate what you said. I tend to agree with Counselor Sims about the accessibility, because while today it is not, you know, used for much public besides members of the church potentially, we did have a verbal, you know, discussion about this during the last rezon that the parking was available to the public, though there was no formal commitment made. So a sidewalk would be beneficial for truly allowing the public to get safe access into it. So I just wanted to throw that in there and also bring, you know, specific comments.
Yes, as far as access by the public, we, we did put in a stair down to the sidewalk, so, you know, there, there is access there.
Steve? Yeah. My name is Steve Monk. I'm also here on behalf of OLS. First of all, I wanted to point out that this particular part of Park Ridge, which is 60 feet in right-of-way, I would think the standard would be around 50 feet, but you've got to look at what it connects to, and it connects to a 20-foot wide alley. So this is not really a, a true public thoroughfare to begin with, and I would think that particularly with the, with the, the stairs that are being put in as part of the overall parking lot, it provides direct access down to Central Avenue.
Mr. Kendrick, isn't this a city street?
It is a public street, yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, since you said it was...
It just services the OLS property now, on both sides and to the rear.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Back to the value issue, because you could look at the assessed value, you can look at what they paid for per square foot basis, and then determine the square footage is where I would, the only ways I know that you could evaluate it. You know what you paid per square foot, just times that plus the number of square feet would be one methodology.
Yeah, whatever the council...
Yeah, that, that's typically...
You know, that, that certainly would not get involved with appraisals, and then again, we could use an appraisal if, if that's what you need for a paper trail. So I, I don't, y'all decide that and just tell us the number.
But, so y'all are wanting, y'all don't want to put this off? Y'all would rather go ahead and do something, and then once you have a number, if it's not satisfactory?
Yeah, we have those options, you know.
Yeah. Okay. Then I would move to approve conditional on acceptance of the price for the vacation.
What is the price going to be?
Well...
How do you want to figure?
To be determined.
Well, how are we going to determine?
But with the square footage price.
Okay, based on the value that they paid for when they purchased?
For the adjacent property.
Yes, yes. That, based on the square footage, what, no, hold on.
Well, Steve has suggested, I guess he's an attorney, the appraised fair market value.
Well, the fair market value is what you paid for, because that's what a willing buyer and a willing seller. Steve knows the law on that.
When we bought the property, as, as others have already stated in, in previous council meetings, the property was purchased for a premium by the church because it would not be, no one else would pay that kind of money for that.
And, and I understand that, and you, that point has been made. I, I think Mike's point is that a price was paid for the property, whatever the price was, it was. So it, that makes it the fair market value of the adjacent, of the value of the adjacent land, because that's the most recent purchase that quite frankly didn't come that long.
That's what it is if we condemn it, you know, Sanford and Tardis, a million six ones, probably.
No, I, I think, if we went through condemnation now, we'd go through an appraisal process. That's what the city would want, we'd go through an appraisal process.
Whatever, I just need to know how to figure it out, the council...
Yeah.
Here's...
However you guys...
Wait, wait, wait. Ms. Smith, your motion is to approve conditional upon, or the, I don't think it's actually OLS, I think it's actually the diocese, but the acceptance of...
Purchase price.
The purchase of the...
Based on the formula...
Of the, the, the purchase price of the adjacent property for that square, times that square footage.
For the, whatever the square footage is of that particular stretch of.
I'll sign that motion.
And we have a second of that. Sorry, had to get that procedure done before.
Who was the second?
Andrews.
Ms. Andrews.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. All right. And just so everyone knows, I am recused from this, I'm recusing myself from this. My wife is paid by the diocese, so I just, hold on. Everyone relax. I'm, so I'm recusing myself from this vote because of that. Mr. Harden, I don't know, I, are you recusing yourself? I know you did last time. Are you recusing yourself this time? Okay. And just wanted to make that clear. Now, Mr. Felici, did you have another comment?
Yeah, e- either way, what we paid for the property, or if some state law or something says you've got to have an appraisal, that's fine too. E- either, either method is, is okay with us.
Well, I think the, the motion that's currently is only for one method, so...
Yeah, you tell us.
But, but if something were to change, sure.
And right, because it's conditional, so if y'all decided that y'all were not satisfied with the cost, you could pursue the other options.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Can we just roll call for it?
We can do a roll call. Roll for you, Ms. Salter.
It's, it's been a long day, so... Okay. All right. Counselor Gualtin?
Yes, ma'am.
You're voting yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
No.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
No.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Harden is abstaining, and President Wyatt is abstaining, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I have two noes, two abstentions, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven yeses.
Seven to two to two.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so that passes and is resolution 2124, and someone probably from BEZ will be in touch with you about the...
Steve, can you compute the square footage price based on the purchase price? And we'll get our people to verify it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Send that to me, I'll get it to our people and we'll...
All right. Next item, 171015, that's not on there. Never mind. Next item is 120121, request for permission to work in the city right-of-way for a fire hydrant on 18th Street South, brought to us by Mr. Cobb, and we'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Committee met right before the meeting and heard from Chief Nick Hill, as well as a representative from Capstone Real Estate, about the need for a private fire hydrant in front of the Edgar's, building Edgar's property. The chief told us that essentially they will do the testing that they do on all fire hydrants through the city, but they did not want to pay the ongoing fee because they didn't really need a fire hydrant right there. So the, the business is needing permission to work in the right-of-way to put that fire hydrant in. Ms. Andrews made the motion to approve it, and Mr. Alamon seconded it, and it was a five to zero vote coming out of Special Issues.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second from Special Issues. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes, 11 to zero, 11 to zero, and is 2125.
Sorry.
That's okay. Just tell me if you're saying, if you're saying no when I, when I talk over you.
I was taking my finger, making the fly motion across your face.
All right. Next item, 020221, request for permission to work in the city right-of-way in the alley behind 413 Woodland Drive to remove a hackberry tree, brought to us by Bert Neighbors and Wyatt Pugh, and also a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes, Dr. Neighbors came to the committee before this meeting and asked to remove a hackberry tree in the public right-of-way behind his house. We, Mr. Sims made a motion to approve that, with Mr. Alamon seconding, five to zero to approve removing the tree in the right-of-way, coming out of Special Issues.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second from Special Issues. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that's also 11 to zero, and it'll be resolution 2126. Next item, 030221, request for permission to work in the city right-of-way at 2719 19th Street South, brought to us by Reeves Construction and Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. Okay, how am I going to flip my page? The Reeves Construction folks came to committee before this meeting and presented a plan for a redevelopment of the building on 19th. The, Ms. Andrews voted to approve, made a motion to approve the, the request, and Ms. Gier seconded with a vote five to zero, coming out of Special Issues.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstaining.
So we have 1001 with Mr. Harden abstaining.
Okay.
And that passes and will be resolution 2127. All right, next item, 040221, request for variance to extend fence taller than eight feet at 1507 Ridge Road, brought, brought to us by Colleen Hindling and Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes, we had inadvertently not put the setting of public hearing for this, which it's a fence variance, so it requires a public hearing. So we have set the public hearing, or we would like to, we made a motion to set the public hearing on March the 8th at 6:00 PM, and that motion was made by Ms. Andrews and seconded by Mr. Alamon, five to zero.
So we will set that public hearing for March 8th, and just to be clear for the record, it's already been sent out without recommendation as well, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, the motion also included sending it out without recommendation, pending that public hearing on March 8th.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, next item, 160115, update, I'm sorry, didn't mark that one out either. 050221, request to declare the following total vehicle surplus, 2014 Chevy Tahoe and 2016 Chevy Tahoe, brought to us by Gordon James, and a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. First of all, thank you for not reading the VIN numbers. I appreciate, it means a lot to me. Older council members will appreciate that.
For those of you that don't know, when Mr. Limbaugh was here, it being, it being his wheelhouse, he loved reading the entire VIN number. It was pain.
Loved them, loved them. So anyway, the Finance Committee met tonight at 5:00 and voted five to zero to approve declaring the surplus.
Thank you very much. And this is an ordinance, so, Mr. Kendrick, if you could give us the first reading, please.
Sure. It's an ordinance to declare a certain personal property equipment as surplus. It's hereby established and declared the following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public and municipal purposes. 2014 Chevy Tahoe, last three numbers of the VIN, 3662, and a 2016 Chevy Tahoe, the last three numbers of the VIN is 3063, whereas the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to dispose of the property described in section one by conveyance to Traveler's Insurance as part of a pending claim on the city's insurance, current insurance policy.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Harden. Ms. Salter, if you could give us a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Gualtin?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is 11 to zero, and now entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Did I hear a second?
I saw it.
Oh, thank you. Second from Ms. Andrews, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtin?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon? Throwing me off there. Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. So that is also 11 to zero vote, and that will be ordinance 2797. Yeah, it is. All right. 080221, request for consideration for crosswalks and/or a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Gray Street and Evergreen Avenue, brought to us by Counselor Gier, and we'll start with a report from Public Safety. Mr. Harden, do you have that?
We had it discussed, it, it passed five to zero in our, in Public Safety.
Wonderful, and that was for both the crosswalk and the four-way stop, correct?
Both, crosswalk and the four-way stop, correct.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, could you give us the, is this, I'm sorry, do you have one ordinance with both in it?
No, ma'am, no, sir, I didn't know.
That's fine. I just didn't know which way it was.
I have two ordinances, one for the four-way stop and one for the crosswalk.
Whichever one you want to start with.
I'll start with the four-way stop.
Okay.
Beordane by the City Council is follows, every person, firm, or corporation operating motor vehicle in an eastern direction on Gray Street, come to complete stop intersection of Gray Street with the westery line of, westerly line of Evergreen Avenue. Section two, that any person operating a motor vehicle in a westerly direction on Gray Street, come to complete stop intersection of Gray Street with the easterly line of Evergreen Avenue. Three, that any person operating a motor vehicle in a northerly direction on Evergreen Avenue, come to complete stop intersection of Evergreen Avenue with a southerly line of Gray Street. Section four, with any person operating a motor vehicle in the southerly direction on Evergreen Avenue, come to complete stop intersection of Evergreen Avenue with a northerly line of Gray Street. Section five, that no person, no person, firm, or corporation shall park a motor vehicle within 30 feet of the intersection of Evergreen Avenue and Gray Street. Section six, that a violation of this ordinance upon conviction shall be punished as provided by section one dash eight of the Code of Ordinances. Section seven, the chief of police's, shall cause or to be erected lines marking, no parking signs, stop signs, as identified in paragraphs one through five above. Section eight, that provisions of the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor or otherwise becoming law.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments about that? If not, then I...
Motion for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Second from Mr. Harden. Second from Mr. Harden, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gaultney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier? Counselor Alamon? Counselor Wolverton? Counselor Sims? Counselor Jones? Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms? Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Harden? And President Wyatt.
Yes, alright, so that's eleven to zero, and entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gier, second by Mr. Harden, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gaultney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier? Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton? Counselor Sims? Counselor Jones? Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms? Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Harden? And President Wyatt.
Yes, alright, so that passes eleven to zero.
Twenty-seven ninety-eight.
Twenty-seven ninety-eight. Alright, Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us the first reading of the crosswalk.
Yes, it's an ordinance to provide for the installation of pedestrian crosswalks at the intersection of Evergreen Avenue and Gray Street in the city. Beordane is follows, the chief of police shall be directed, shall be directed to install pedestrian crosswalks across Gray Street and Ever Avenue at the intersection of Gray Street with Evergreen Avenue. Section two, that all drivers and motor vehicles to find the highway code or yield of pedestrians located in the crosswalk as defined above. Section three, any person, firm, or corporation found guilty of violation, this ordinance shall be punished as provided by section one dash eight of the Code of Ordinances. Section four, all other ordinances or parts of ordinance contrary to the provision here of ours specifically to repeal. Section five, that any part of provision or order declared to be unconstitutional and violated by court of competition jurisdiction, all of the parts not affected shall remain in full force and effect. Section six, that provision of ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by the mayor and City Council or otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick, entertain a motion for unanimous consent. Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir, Counselor Gaultney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier? Counselor Alamon? Counselor Wolverton? Counselor Sims? Counselor Jones? Counselor Smith? Counselor Nelms? Counselor Andrews? Counselor Harden? And President Wyatt.
Yes, that is eleven to zero, and now entertain a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Smith, and one more roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Uh-huh, Counselor Gaultney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier? Counselor Alamon? Counselor Wolverton? Counselor Sims? Counselor Jones? Counselor Smith? Counselor Nelms? Counselor Andrews? Counselor Harden? And President Wyatt.
Yes.
Twenty-seven ninety-nine?
Very good, and that was also eleven to zero. Alright. Next item is oh one oh two twenty, request for updates on Greens Springs revitalization, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, and a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, sir. We met earlier today. And Berkeley gave a, an update on negotiations, we had rejected bids that we'd received, and were able to negotiate with the bidder. They propose, we've got a new proposed bid price of two point four one million dollars, reducing the total by about three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We also were able to bring down the bid alternate. And Berkeley met with the mayor and Mr. Jones. Regarding this money, we went ahead and voted to send it out to Finance to decide where and how we will pay for the shortcoming. And it was voted out unanimously.
Okay, so we won't need a resolution, but we'll go ahead and vote to send it to Finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That's eleven to zero, and that will go to Finance next week. Alright, that brings us to the committee, the amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended committee referral agenda. By Mr. Alamon. Second by Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's eleven to zero. Alright, that brings us to other new business, seventeen oh two twenty-one, request to set a public hearing for consideration to rezone property at 2713 18th Street South from mixed use to C4A, the applicant is Mike Michael Adrian Ron, to facilitate the development of a new restaurant. This came from the Planning Commission with a vote of seven to one favorable recommendation of the rezone. This public hearing will be set for March 29th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Alright, next item, eighteen oh two twenty-one, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract with Operation School Bell for services and to receive their fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation of five thousand dollars, brought to us by Mr. Burgett, Finance Director, and Assistant City Clerk, and Ms. Salter, or City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director. This is an item that is, that was already budgeted and the money's already been done, we just need to authorize the mayor to actually get them the money. Any questions or comments about that? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion, motion by Ms. Andrews, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero, and I lost count of.
I have so many ordinances. What's that, maybe it's twenty-one twenty-eight?
That's what I got, twenty-one twenty-eight. Alright, next item, nineteen oh two twenty-one, request to change the date of the second regular scheduled council meeting in March to March 29th, 2021 due to spring break the week of March 22nd, 2021, brought to the council by myself. I think this is self-explanatory, but fortunately we have five Mondays in March, so we don't have to double up on anything. Thank goodness. So, any questions or comments?
What are your, what are your spring break plans?
Mine are not much, but I don't want other people to not be able to attend because it's spring break, so.
I kid.
I wish I had better plans, but. Motion to approve by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero, and that is.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-one twenty-nine. Alright, next item, twenty oh two twenty-one, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for a period of February 9th, 2021 through February 22nd, 2021, brought to us by Mr. Burgett, Finance Director, and Assistant City Clerk, and Ms. Salter, City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director. Mr. Jones, is this, is still Ms. Smith?
Yes, I came in this morning and reviewed the vouchers, man, was it easier than it has been before, because it was not very many bills. But I will say, I, because I like to follow in Mr. James's footsteps and bring up interesting information when I find it. I would just like to point out that for January, the city made payments to the Board of Education in the amount of over nine million dollars. Because it was the December to February property tax amount, and then also the January sales tax. So just, you know, not many cities do that. So just wanted to point that out. But other than that, I had two quick questions that Mr. Burgett answered, and I would move to approve the vouchers.
How you know why Ms. Bush was trying to find me and Robert the other day when we were out? Because property tax comes in over, it comes in over a three-month period.
Looking for that nine million dollars.
And we gotten a couple of big checks in.
Alright, we have a motion for approval from Ms. Smith, do we have a second? Second from Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That is eleven to zero, and will be Resolution 21 dash thirty. Alright, last item, fourteen oh two twenty-one, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 1600 Shades Glen Circle, brought to us by Bill Weston and Wyatt Pugh. That public hearing will be set for our next meeting, March 8th at 6:00 PM. Alright, and that brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have one more, I guess, list of names that I get to read off to you guys tonight. Due to expired terms on the Planning Commission, as I mentioned to you guys a couple of weeks ago, I had to have four positions to be filled. And I got a lot of great candidates that approached me or were sent to me via, via email, phone call, you know, however they could reach out to me. So we had, we had four places that we had to, had to replace due to expired terms, and I do want to say thank you to all four of those members. Mark Woods, James Riddle, Jeff Foster, and Billy Higginbotham. I know they had all done a very good job on the Planning Commission, for, each one of them has a different number of years on there. But I do want to certainly say thank you to, to each one of those guys. I am excited to, to say that the candidates that I have chosen have backgrounds in a wide variety of aspects, from real estate, planning and development, CPA backgrounds, multiple successful local business owner, and, and commercial business development. So the four people that are going to, and I believe, Mr. Kendrick, it would be for next Tuesday, correct, is the first meeting for the Planning Commission? First Tuesday, I heard it must be next Tuesday, be the first meeting.
The second, March 2nd.
Two.
Yes, it's next Tuesday.
That's next week.
It's next Tuesday, yes.
Yeah, that's, okay, I just want to, alright, listen, I, hey, I know it's been a long day for everybody, I just want to make sure I was correct on that.
Yeah, community meetings are on March 1st, that'll be on March 2nd.
Sure, there you go. But, so congratulations to Winslow Armstead, Paige Wilcutt, Gianni Rispinto, and Patrick Harwell are the four choices for, for the Planning Commission. So again, you know, I applaud everybody for reaching out, you know, not just people that you guys had sent me, but for everybody that was, that was interested in the spot. I've been talking to a lot of people for a while, so I really do appreciate everybody's willingness to serve. And there will be more positions available, not just on the Planning Commission, but other boards for.
Who was the first one you said?
Winslow Armstead. So, but thank you. I'm sorry. The terms are six years.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alright, Mr. Gaultney?
Did you can hear me okay?
We can.
I apologize for the audio issues on the drive home. I just wanted to say, commend the City Clerk's office and Ms. Salter and Brian also, and Teddy Tripp, and for their communication last week during the mini snowpocalypse that we had. I appreciate all of their communication during the inclement weather, because it helped make sure that everybody was safe. Also, a big thank you to Homewood Police and the Homewood Fire Department for clearing any streets. I saw them out, you know, sprinkling sand on some roads, everybody else that had big hills, and waving at the kids, and, you know, making everything seem like it was just another normal day. So thank you, thank you to all of our city employees for all that they did. Now, Public Works, I'll have to get down. That's it. What'd you say about Public Works?
They said they don't want to forget them.
What about setting public?
Oh yeah, I do need to set a committee. Counselor Jones, how long do you need for finance next week?
Does anyone know? Does anyone know how long the presentation from the Chamber of Commerce, that's coming from you, Mr. Harden? Is that a short presentation?
I need to check, because they, they want to come to us once a year.
Okay, let's make it thirty minutes, the last time was about fifteen minutes. So you have thirty minutes, Mr. Gaultney?
Thank you, Counselor Jones, all set, E and D, I'm sorry, I bad too. Public Safety, five thirty, fifteen minutes. It's all over the place.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gier?
Don't really have an announcement, but I just wanted to recognize Black History Month and ask everyone to listen to and learn from others in our community this month, in any way you can, related to all the great characters, people, and who have been important parts of our history. Just take this opportunity to listen and learn for Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alamon? Get places without, without everyone being in line, at times I'm like, who wants to come first? Sorry, Mr. Alamon.
Just want to thank Ms. Salter for asking me to do the invocation in Spanish.
It was beautiful, thank you.
And for all the work that she and Mr. Burgett do every day for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes. Mainly just wanted to thank Police Department for a very quick, thorough, and successful manhunt. It was a little exciting last week, beginning of the week, we had somebody report a couple of break-ins in the middle of the day, on a rainy day, on a holiday, when lots of people were home, which doesn't seem like a very smart thing, but this guy didn't seem to be super bright. But anyway, fortunately, we have, we had all units that I know of in the city come over and respond. In addition, we had two of our neighborhood officers who were not on duty at the time decide to help out, and they very quickly flushed the guy out, and one of them had reached out to a neighboring business at the beginning of the call, and that's actually where we, we got the call, that he had run off across the street to the, to the gas station to hide in the bathroom. So he, he was taken without incident, and I think everybody was, was happy. So just want to thank the Police Department for everything they do on a daily basis, and also for just the commitment of neighbors to say something when they saw something that seemed, you know, out of sorts, because it clearly helps, so. I think that's really it, and then, let's see. Public Works, Mr. Kendrick, do you think we're going to have any? The updated, yeah. Okay, so we'll set, did we say Public Safety was fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. So we can set Public Works for five forty-five, for fifteen minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Thanks, I would like to just echo Counselor Gier's remarks in celebration of Black History Month. Actually, I had two supporters, friends of mine, who encouraged me when I was running for local office for City Council, whose grandfather is Dr. Sonny Hereford III. And Dr. Hereford pursued a medical license at a time when you couldn't do that in the state of Alabama, because he was a black man. And he actually went to Tennessee, he became a doctor, came back to the Huntsville area, had his son, Sonny Hereford IV, who is my friends Beth and Catherine's father. And actually, Dr. Hereford IV was the first to, you know, attend a school, and after his father, I'm sorry, attend, you know, a school during segregation, because his father sued the state of Alabama and walked into the school door and demanded that his son be let in and attend class with, with other students, you know, who were white. So really grateful for the Hereford family, just ask that you, as part of Black History Month, you know, look up Dr. Hereford. Sonny Hereford, he was a great man, and we have a lot of great, you know, activists and advocates in our community locally as well. Also, at this time, would like to, you know, show appreciation for Counselor Nelms, who is a black female leader in our community and has, you know, led a generation behind her as well. You see her daughters, and they're actively involved in the community, and so just grateful for Counselor Nelms for leading a path and cheers to her during Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Finance, five o'clock, and just wanted to reflect briefly on the Exceptional Foundation. And I was around when we first, when they first started, and we helped them get, get started. And it's been a great asset to Homewood over the years, and I feel like, it's almost like someone was looking down upon them, because I remember the last public thing I did was the chili cook-off, and then all of a sudden everything shut down. You know, so I'm glad at least we got the chili cook-off, and they were able to get that in before everything. But I appreciate them coming tonight, and I look forward to a softball game. I do remember a few members falling down on the, running around the bases. People remember that, but I'm looking forward to some, creating some new memories, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'll set Special Issues for six, and I hate to do this to you, Ms. Andrews, but I have three presentations. So I'm gonna go ahead and save an hour.
It's gonna be a long night, yeah.
Well, I mean, because I figured, like, I mean, I have other items too, and if they each do fifteen minutes, I'll probably.
I mean, I, I think I'm gonna be an hour too.
Alright, so we're just gonna be here.
Tonight party that night.
Tree ordinance and.
Yep, bring your, bring your, bring your coffee.
Okay, the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission is doing an interesting project for Preservation Month, which is May. They are looking for homeowners in Homewood who have done, have done renovation projects on their homes, but have tried to keep to the historical integrity of the house. They have a form, a Google form on their Facebook page that you can fill out if you feel, if you know somebody or a person who's done that. And they've already gotten quite a few people who are interested, and they're going to recognize that those folks in, during the month of May with yard signs. It's not a hundred percent nailed down, but there's going to be a recognition for the folks that actually do that, and they're going to post pictures and things like that on their Instagram and their Facebook page. Jake Collins kind of came up with this and has spearheaded it, and it sounds really interesting. And today is my oldest son's twenty-first birthday, which has made me feel exceptionally old today. And it also just stuns me, I just, it just stuns me. So happy birthday to Thomas, and hopefully he's at home doing homework and not not drinking beer illegally.
If you like to place any bets.
No, I would not, because I would lose. And then. Oh, yes, absolutely, absolutely, first beer ever. And for, for your little high school soccer update. And for, for your little high school soccer update, the varsity team tied John Carroll last week one to one, which was devastating to my son. It was in the middle of a pouring down rainstorm on Six Acre Field, which was super fun. It was also really, really cold. Then they beat Altamont Friday night, five to one. They play Hewitt-Trussville tomorrow night, and Browerwood on Friday night, so if anybody has, you know, lots of free time and wants to come watch varsity soccer, should be two good games this week, so there you go, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nelms?
Yes, I wanted to thank our committee for the Sanford Neighborhood and Sanford University, and kind of update just briefly on our meeting on February ninth. We had, I did not keep track, but I think we had about ten residents, or twelve, including myself and Alex, that were on the Zoom meeting, and basically Sanford has, you know, agreed to do the quarterly meetings with the neighborhood due to concerns, obvious concerns of dilapidated houses in and around Sanford that are Sanford-owned properties that hadn't been kept up over the years, that have been neglected, and that are affecting property owners, whether it be concerns for the property being vacant, run down, or just not kept up. So, Sanford has agreed to do the quarterly meetings, and I've attended, my first one only officially was the last, you know, the February ninth one was my first official one. And basically, they have come and come through the neighborhood and updated the houses. It was, you know, to some of the residents, words of pulling teeth, or it was a hardship for the residents. However, they have followed through with fixing the houses, maintaining the houses, and the community and the neighborhood just wants this to be maintained. One of the requests from the residents has been to have a maintenance person, a professional maintenance person to manage the properties. They have, as of the last meeting, secured a gentleman who's been with Sanford for about twenty-five years to focus on these properties to make sure they're kept up to the standards of the neighborhood and in a much better condition than they have been prior. Residents are also concerned about, you know, Sanford not buying so many houses in the neighborhood. Those are concerns, those are things that are ongoing on our meetings that will continue on, but, you know, we are working with Sanford, bringing information back to the council, bringing information from the neighbors to Sanford, and trying to keep things steadily improving instead of going back the way they were. And lastly, they, well, I told you, they've already assigned somebody to the properties. That's about it, but we will continue to meet quarterly. We're hoping to meet in person next time, and that's about it. And I would also like to give my extension of celebration to Black History. I am honored that Nick would bring me up, but I would like to highlight two ladies that hopefully have brought y'all the person that I am. And the first one is Lena Townsend, who is my grandmother. She got her degree at Alabama State, and got her advanced degree from Columbia University in the forties. And my mother got her degree from Tuskegee University and got her advanced degree in the sixties from UCLA. And so, when you come behind that, it's kind of hard to stand behind not having opportunities or having doors closed or ceilings above you. When you have those two ladies, Lena and Lucille, you just got to keep going. So, I wanted to highlight them, and thank y'all.
Thank you, that's quite a, that's pretty impressive. A hard, hard act to follow.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying.
Ms. Andrews?
Well, I hear Zoe is ready to make her own, I hear it's official, right? It's official? Northeastern? Yeah. Okay, congratulations to her. Doesn't start with the letter B, all the other colleges she was looking at, I was trying to letter B.
It's in B state.
I wanted to go to Melbourne, but I'm happy, I know she wanted to be in Boston, that's right, I knew she wanted to be in Boston. Okay, so we're going to set P and D for seven o'clock. I really think that is the first time we've done that, and it's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long one. I mean, murals, tree ordinance, and your item, and it's gonna be a.
Just curious, what's on, the tree ordinance is coming back from Planning Commission?
It's coming back.
So, they've voted to move something, or they're just?
Took two years.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Andy sent it to the Planning Commission two years ago, so it's back. It's back, baby, it's back better than ever. Okay, so, I know I've not emailed you guys the last couple of weeks on the unified command, I apologize, but the good news is those numbers look better and better each time we meet. We are down to two-hundred-and-five in the hospital, down from six-hundred about three or four weeks ago, so really big difference. Forty on ventilators, seventy in the ICU with four deaths. The, the news obviously is vaccine, 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 and distribution. We had a little bit of snafus last week with weather, but the, reading the tea leaves, they're thinking the J and J, single shot is coming out maybe next week. So, that will definitely help with distribution, only having to line up one shot for patients, so that is the news there. Our stop sign is coming on Wednesday, so I want to thank Randy for getting that out, and really excited about that. Thanks to you guys. Okay, we had a great trip to Montgomery, we missed you, Counselor Jones, not join us, but it was a really fantastic trip, and really spent some quality, quality time with our state representative, one of our state representatives, Dave Faulkner. Really, that was the highlight of the day, I mean, we really got some, just high-level time with him, and it was, really went well, so we're so appreciative of him and all that he does for Homewood, as well as our other state representatives, John Rogers, and then our state senators, Dan Roberts, Jabba Wagner, and Roger Schmidt, and we just can't thank them enough for all they do for us. I don't know if you guys have been underneath the expressway coming into Hollywood as you're coming from Mountain Brook Y, where Mountain Brook and Homewood and Birmingham kind of all come together. One of the Feral Twins, I don't know if it's Jack or Charlie, has completed his Eagle Scout project. Which one is it?
Jack.
It was Jack, okay.
He got the better, he picked the better straw because it's across the street from his house. His brother had to do the one over by Vulcan.
Okay, well, and is that one done yet?
I actually don't know, I go, I see the one that's coming through there, I don't know where, I think he probably is done.
Okay, well, it looks great.
They're both turning eighteen here in about a week.
Well, we'll have to get them up here and do like what we did for, for Will Ryan and for John Hart, I mean, Michael Harden. We'll have to get them up here and do the same thing, so anyway, that looks terrific. Okay, hello, Makaya Sills, y'all, oh my gosh, y'all, oh my gosh, she is the Conference USA champion in the hurdles. That is incredible, so congratulations to her. And then, Counselor Gualney, I want to let everybody know about our Counselor Roundtable Project. We are going live next month through the whole county, so this is going to be, we've modeled ourselves after the Mayor's Association, and we presented to the Mayor's Association this month, and so we are rolling out next month to all thirty-five municipalities where we're going to have a representation from each city council, meet on a monthly basis, take on regional projects together, we've been loosely doing this. Andy was in the very original group that started about two years ago, Andy, or two and a half years ago, and, and then I said, I'm committing.
Yeah, I was running two and a half years ago.
And then I invited myself and started coming with him, and then I took it over. Sounds about right. But anyway, we, we've got some really big plans, so look for, we're going to do a big press release and a big rollout, so look for information on that, but we're really excited about that, we've got some great things to talk about. Casey Middlebrooke from Hoover is the chair, and I am the vice chair, and then we've got representation already from Besmer, Huey Town, Fairfield, Irondale, Mountain Brook, Vestavia, Hoover. Who? You know, they haven't really been, they haven't, they really haven't been joining us lately, but hopefully we'll get them back. They, they really have not been super, and Birmingham, of course, city of Birmingham, so. Anyway, that was a long, long story, but happy to answer any questions about that, it's going to be a lot of fun, so. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harden?
Well, I'm gonna short, I'm gonna do mine a lot shorter. I just want to thank all the city employees whenever we have something like a snowpocalypse. It is tough on the employees, but people may not realize that, you know, when the street sanitation, sanitation workers get a day off, they don't really get a day off because when they come back, it's double, because our garbage does not go, gee, when they get a day off, we cut our garbage. It's so, they, they do hard work for us, they missed, I guess, probably two days this week. My garbage was gone, so I, I'm happy.
I actually want to add something to that, too. They, they sent a crew around on Saturday, I believe, so, thank you.
Alright, well, that just leaves me, I've got a couple of things. First, Ms. Alma, thank you for that prayer, as nice as it was in English, it was really good in Spanish. Appreciated that. And Ms. Nelms, thank you for the Sanford meeting and running that, I thought you did a great job, and I appreciate you doing that. Mr. Mayor, thank you for taking the time to interview a lot of good people and, and talk to good people to point both to the task force and to the Planning Commission. And it's always hard to choose between qualified candidates, so we appreciate your work on that. And with that now in place, and with, you know, the Planning Commission set, and BZA set, and the council set, we are ready to have our meeting. So, the only issue with it is that spring break and Easter and all that kind of stuff coming up, so we're going to try to do it beforehand, and there's really just one day that we could do it, which is Saturday, March thirteenth. So, if anyone has a big issue with the thirteenth, please let me know, we can talk about it afterwards. It will be, whenever we do it, it'll be downstairs so that we can spread out, and Planning Commission will be there, and BZA will be there as well for the first half of the day, and then we will have some extra stuff that we do as a council after lunch. So, hopefully, we'll do it for the thirteenth, but we'll, obviously, a lot of people got to, got to, we got to go through a lot of people for that, so, but that's the plan.
Can you give me the times when you know it, so I can publicly know it?
I will, I expect it to be early, you know, nine o'clock, maybe something like that, maybe eight. Probably nine. So, so, I, I think we'll be able to do nine. Okay, and then lastly, I want to build on what Dr. Jones said about the Exceptional Foundation, and give him, none of the rest of us were here at the time that the Exceptional Foundation came to Homewood. One of the people that was on the Exceptional Foundation board was talking to me a couple of months ago and was talking about that event, and said that y'all don't get nearly enough credit for what you did, because there were other cities who shall remain nameless, who said, "Not on your life." And Homewood didn't flinch, and said, "We'd love to have you, we'd love to have you here, we want you to be a part of this community, and we welcome you." And so, everyone who did that back then had a lot of foresight, because what has, what that has turned into is amazing. You know, if you've ever heard Tricia talk, you, you can, she'll, she'll tell, it won't take long before she tells you how people in India are calling her to say, "How do you do this so that we can do it over here?" So, what, what they've built over there and what they do is unbelievably important, and such a great thing, and so unique. And so, Mr. Jones, thank you for being one of the ones to have the foresight to bring that here, and I can't wait for the softball game either, because the basketball game is my single favorite, most favorite event for being on City Council, and I miss it, so I'm looking forward to softball. And with that, we will see all of you in committees next week, and we will be adjourned as a council until March eighth.